Okay, we're back in session, Monday the 25th. Selectmen's meeting. We've been joined by the Finance Committee. Just so I do the legal lease, this meeting is being recorded for cablecast and YouTube presentation by Area 58 Community Access Media. The video of this meeting is not to be considered an official public record. So, first item, it's Finance Committee to discuss budgets, warrant articles, and next steps.
Okay, so what you have in front of you...
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm gonna interrupt one time. We actually have an appointment that we have to do and get this done. For a temporary part-time senior clerk for the town clerk's office until June 30th, 2019, Jill Palestine is Board of Selectmen are signing this by virtue of authority vested in us. So I make a motion that we approve this?
And I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Congratulations.
But you're welcome to stay and listen to the Finance Committee.
You're fascinating.
Yeah. Just so you know, Christine Joy is out, she's got illness, but she'll be with us next time. Okay.
So, over the course of the last several weeks, we've been meeting fairly regularly with Barbara and Liz Dennehy, instrumental as always in helping us prepare the budget. What we have in front of you is our first draft at the budget for the coming fiscal year. We've gone through it line by line, you'll see there's a recommendation for the town administrator, then in the green under the recommended column is what the FINCON has tentatively approved as our recommendation, of course, pending the bottom line and where we think we can make it work or not. So, if we... Can you scroll down to the bottom, please? So, at the big number at the end is 11 million 352 is the total budget of all departments, and that is up from last year's 10 million 903 was the budget for fiscal 2019. Our target that we were using this year was the top item there, which is target revenue 11 million 508, 121. That is what we had set, and what we have done in the past, we've always said a 2.5% increase over our current, and that was the number that results there. We are able to increase to the full levy limit if we wanted to, if we chose to, if there was a need to, and that number is the 12 million 2 number there. Again, historically, we don't typically go to that limit, we try to cap ourselves at the 2.5%. So, as you can see, our target is 11.5, the budget's at 11.352, which leaves approximately $150,000 excess, if you will, but that does not include any warrant articles at this time, so we're pretty tight against the cap, our self-imposed cap as of right now. I think we'll entertain any questions you might have, or we'll go over any particular sections that you might want to review, or...
I guess the warrant articles, how much do they total?
We were still working on that when we adjourned to come here.
Right.
Because some of them, we only have a sum of money until the numbers can be a little further refined.
Okay, sure, sure. I assume some of those are gonna come out of the capital account?
Some will.
So...
It's well over $107,000.
Yeah, right, exactly, it's certainly...
It's like $700,000.
Yeah.
So until we get numbers, we don't really... Yeah, and it's early.
Yeah, we just, right, exactly, we just kinda wanted to give you an interim report on where we stood so far, but if you wanna, can you click on the tab for warrant articles? We can kinda give a...
Sure.
So these are, these are some of the articles that have been presented to us, again, some of them would come out of a capital fund, but...
Nate, you have me blocked.
I'm sorry, I do that sometimes. But you can see some of the other ones would be coming out of Raising Appropriate.
Where does the road construction come? Is that out of Chapter 90, or how does that work?
In past years, some of that have come from free cash or something of that nature.
Okay.
And some is built into the capital plan, isn't it?
Right, yes.
Yeah.
I think we have, either 200 or 250 a year was our capital plan.
There was some too that we were kind of working with when we adjourned, say the school playground, for instance, that would be the CPC funding that's proposed for that, so we could realistically, we'd probably remove that amount.
So I thought the school playground was quite a bit more than that, did they change something?
I can't quite see how far that... What is the number?
94,000.
94,000? I thought it was up around 250.
Well, it is about that as a total, there are funds available, other funds in the school committee, and then part of the project, an extra swing set or something or others left off, so that is correct, it's 94,000 that would come from CPC.
Okay, good. And you've got enough in there to...
We do.
Yeah.
Thank goodness.
And I think the metal building, we need to talk through, but...
Right.
Obviously, that'd be going forward.
Exactly. Yeah, a lot of these items would, obviously, have per discussion between our committee and yours.
And if I may, the fire command vehicle and the highway vehicle, that's the full cost of the items. We can always do these purchases, like for four years, and considerably drop the initial payments on those.
Is the council on aging van in there?
No. It's on the warrant.
Okay, so it's on the warrant?
To that stage.
Okay, okay. And what about the library, the library frame for the disability, so for the doors?
That'll be on the special, Towny.
Oh, that's special, okay, okay.
So they can do it right away.
Okay.
They don't have to wait till July 1st.
Great. So timeline for next steps?
Well, we're gonna adjourn back and reconvene, and we'll continue our discussion of the warrant articles. Our next scheduled meeting, I think, is Monday, April 8th, and we expect to have another interim report for you by that point, I would think.
Great. This is good, feels like it's earlier than normal, although I know...
I don't know, it might be, I don't know, honestly.
Yeah. When do you have to go to press with the final?
We turned it around pretty quickly last year with the help of folks at the prison, so I think we tried to get it in people's hands by the first week in May, so we typically have to get it to them about 10 days or so, two weeks in advance of that.
Yeah, so Selectmen would be signing the final warrants on April 22nd.
April 22nd, okay.
And then we'll go from there.
So I may miss the April 8th meeting, it won't be from a lack of interest if by chance I do, and having served on the Finance Committee once, I know how much work it is, and we're really appreciative of you guys, and we're real appreciative of having a town administrator helping out now.
So are we.
Yes.
Yeah, you got a great committee. Great.
Thank you very much, and...
Feels good, thank you. Thank you for Sunday, it was fantastic.
Thanks.
We need to go through these, we'll never...
Let's get through these, and then I'll come back. Do you want, do you need to talk to me? So that you know if... That's on... Okay. This one, he may have, if he has the highlighted one, that's the good one.
Okay, we're gonna move back into the agenda. We have on here Liz's annual and special town meeting prep. Was there anything beyond what we've just talked about?
Um, no, so with that, before you close the warrant, is there anything else that you feel... I put the placeholders from everybody who requested them.
Okay.
As far as the articles that don't involve finances, I've been telling people to get us the finalized text for that, you know, by the second week in April, thereabouts, with the exception of zoning bylaw edits, those need to be run in the paper this week, so they need to have the final text to Deb.
What about legal, as far as having them all reviewed, are we gonna be all right with that?
We can send everything, I think the most efficient way is to send it all in bulk to Greg Corbo and Amy Quessell, and that way they can refine the text of anything if they have to before the planning board public hearing. That's been scheduled for April 16th, the planning board's required hearing, just on the zoning articles. And so the ads are supposed to run, I believe, this Friday and the following Friday, and there's a host of other requirements that Planning Board needs to follow for that process.
Okay.
So if there's nothing else on that, you could close, you have to tonight close the annual town meeting warrant, because as per our local bylaws, you close it the last Monday in March.
Okay.
So it's just closing the warrant from any new articles.
Okay, so I'll make a motion that we close the annual town meeting warrant.
Anyone racing in at the last second? Doesn't look like it.
No.
Oh, I don't...
I'll second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So we're closed.
Okay.
And the special, I talked with Barbara, we figured that we would leave that open until probably April 8th.
When, state law dictates by when?
State law, well, it's not state law so much as our local bylaw is silent on the special town meeting warrant. It talks about when it needs to be posted, but it doesn't talk about when you have to close it, so...
When does it have to be posted?
Um, I believe that one has to be posted technically before the annual, I believe it's seven days prior, but we always post them at the same time, so we're safe if you sign everything on April 22nd, and then we get it posted. I believe by May 1st is typically when we, the goal.
Okay, good. Endorsement of letter to the Commonwealth Municipal Vulnerability Prep Preparedness Program.
The and, the two verses and that you had suggested.
Okay.
The email, I made that edit, but that's for John to sign.
So this is...
That's for the MVP program, so I've been collecting the support letters from various town departments, and that's kind of step one as far as the grant goes. First, you have to get the designation from the state, and then if we get it, then we can apply for the grant funding.
Okay.
So should, should we make a motion?
Do you wanna take a vote to support endorsement?
Yeah, I'm so moved.
Okay.
Okay, second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Do you want this, or should...
Um, I can take that.
Good, be nice to get that. Surplus property, what do we have to do there? That's the, this is for the Atwood property?
This is for the Atwood property, it came in from Rick, and it's for two pumps that are on site, some various sprinkler heads, and an aluminum charcoal filter, and he's requesting that you please take a vote to declare those items as surplus property.
Okay, I would make a motion that we declare as surplus property, two pumps, sprinkler heads, and aluminum charcoal filter on the Two Brooks Preserve formerly known as the Atwood property.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now what will that do, then they'll go out onto the...
Yeah, then they can sell them and...
Yeah, okay, good. And the money will go back into the general fund?
That's what it's supposed to, supposed to happen.
Zoning bylaw for solar projects?
So this was something that I had been discussing with Linda Letty on and off for the last few days, and she pointed out that the town of New Braintree actually has a bylaw in place that caps the number of larger solar projects, so, you know, anything in the 1.5 to 2.5 megawatt range, it just puts a cap on the total number of those allowed in their town.
And why do we wanna do that?
Um, I guess it's a preference type thing, if you felt like we were being inundated with those sorts of projects, and if people were concerned about it changing the landscape or character of the town, really. We have, I believe the numbers Linda gave me, we have six currently and two more that are in permitting.
Okay.
So that's already eight projects for a town of our size, that's considerable.
If we didn't have this amendment, we couldn't stop them, in other words, coming forward?
Um, I mean, not as long as they were able to meet the other requirements in the zoning bylaw relative to solar, then no.
Okay.
If they weren't able to meet those requirements, then, then yes, but this would just put a cap on the total number. There were other pieces in the New Braintree regulations that seemed like the Conservation Commission and the Planning Board were especially interested in, but it's, it's a very long bylaw, it's pretty complex, and parts of it may conflict with our current language.
So we need more time to go through it?
I think we would need more time, but an option for the short term, depending on if people had an appetite for it, would maybe amend our current solar section and simply put in the cap on projects that are, I don't know, call it 1,500 kilowatts or more.
You okay with this, Mike?
Um, I am, very much so, I think the concern is, some of these projects are essentially deforesting five to 10 acres, and really somewhat questionable as far as the beauty of the town, and even more the ecology, whether it makes sense to deforest, to put in solar. I think really the concern also open space being eaten up on these, and although we're totally, I'm totally, and I think all of us are totally in favor, as much renewable power sources as possible, we reach a critical mass, so I think eliminating makes a lot of sense.
Good.
So, I'm sorry, this was a cap on the larger solar projects of 1,500 kilowatts or more?
1,500 kilowatts or more.
Okay.
And were we also going to put something that says and/or take up more than 10 acres? Or should we leave the acreage out for now?
I think, I think the kilowatt, or...
Is the best...
Is, is the cleanest way to define.
Okay, so 1,500 kilowatts.
Yeah.
And this is in the warrant articles that are coming forth?
Yes, so we're, it's going to kind of be a speed race to get it to Deb for tomorrow, but she's aware that something may be coming.
Okay.
And I believe Planning Board actually wants to be the official sponsor of the article.
And they may wanna know, I think, didn't Deb write today wondering how the Selectmen were gonna feel, and can we say we are supportive of such an article?
I think so, you know, I haven't really thought about it until it came up recently.
You know, this is really last minute, some of it comes from just understanding or hearing recently that there are a bunch of other projects that are kind of eyeing the town, and that, just this concern, we need to get this under control if we can.
Yeah.
So...
I mean, I think it's a good start, and then if it turns out that we've, we need to shape it a little different, we have, we'll come back and shape it a little different.
And I wouldn't be surprised if we do have to come back with so many zoning bylaw articles coming up this year, that there may be some refinement along the way.
Right.
So maybe, I'm glad to make a motion saying, letting the Planning Board know that we are supportive of such a solar bylaw.
I'd second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great. Okay, acknowledgement, receipt. Help us through this one.
This is part of the process under Chapter 40A for zoning bylaw amendments, is that technically the amendments are supposed to be received by the Board of Selectmen and turned over to the Planning Board for public hearing.
Right.
So if you could just take a vote to acknowledge receipt of the six proposed zoning bylaw amendments, and forward them to Planning Board for public hearing, that would cover us.
You wanna make the motion, Mr. Yvain?
Sure, so I make a motion that we acknowledge the receipt of proposed zoning bylaw amendments, including those from the Bylaw Review Committee relative to schedule of uses and definitions, the Planning Board relative to marijuana, the Conservation Commission relative to floodplains and watershed protection, and actually also the Planning Board relative to solar.
To solar, and also the Agricultural Commission also relative to floodplains and watershed protection.
Exactly, and I think we wanna make sure we get that exactly right in the minutes, so...
I can give reasons, yes.
Okay, great. So that's the motion.
I would second it.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We have made the most progress I can think of since we've done solar quite a few years ago.
Yeah.
This is, it's really, people have been doing yeoman duty working this through.
Yep.
Notice of award.
So this is for the replacement of the sewer or septic pipe out back and the associated work that was deemed necessary to get that taken care of before they pave out back. So we had put out a request for some estimates, the job was estimated to be less than 10,000, so it requires best practices for procurement.
Right.
One of the estimates that we had received was as high as 8,000, so the lowest one that we have that seems to be responsive and will get the job done is from Norman Ferguson, Jr. He's local here on Maple Street in Plimpton, and his estimate is for $2,500. So we would just ask that the Board take a formal vote to award him the project so that he can get started pending receipt of his certificate of insurance.
Okay, so I would make a motion to that effect?
And I'm second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That's good, it, it needs to be done because that was the whole water problem and...
The whole water problem, and I'd be ashamed to pave and then have to dig it up again.
Dig it up again, right.
As I understand it, he was probably gonna be able to do that pretty quickly and...
Do I have to...
That's for Bree, just for our file, and then when he turns in the certificate of insurance, he can...
So you'll contact him tomorrow?
Contact him tomorrow.
I don't know where to get at it, he'll probably have to coordinate with those guys, the builders.
Yes, so Art was helping with that too, just to facilitate communication with Dan Pallada and EPC.
Do you wanna do your updates, and then you can scurry out if you wanna go back into Finance Committee?
Sure. Do the correspondence first, maybe, it's quite a bit here. We have several use of town property applications. The first one is from the Plimpton Garden Club for a townwide cleanup, and they would be proposing that for April 27th from 8:30 a.m. to 1:30 p.m. at the townhouse out front.
So pending the approvals from other boards and chiefs and the like, I make a motion that we approve this request to use Tom Green, or Tom, or...
Tom Green, I assume. Oh, no, where are they gonna bring it? Last time we brought it to the gazebo.
And this says, property Main Street, Plimpton, under the flagpole of the main entrance, so I guess townhouse.
Okay, townhouse. Great, I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I guess...
Then we have a second one from the Plimpton Garden Club for a plant sale, they would like to set up on May 17th from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., and then have the plant sale and break down afterwards on May 18th from 7:30 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at the towngreen.
Pending the approvals of other chiefs and departments, I make a motion that this application be approved.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Then we have one here from the Reebok Ragnar Relay Race, which is a road race runners, on May 10th from noon to about 3:30 or 4:00 p.m. On their sheet, they put noon, but when I read through the literature, it looks like the peak time that the runners will be coming through is about 3:30 p.m. on that day, and they will be on Brook Street, and they estimate about 60 people.
Is this one done before?
Yes.
Yeah?
That's one of the Cape Cod...
We do every year?
It's related to the Cape Cod Road Race Series.
There's four of them.
So pending the approval of other boards, chiefs, and the like, I make a motion we approve this application.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Then we, we've been receiving a request for a status update relative to the Two Brooks Preserve or former Atwood property and DEP with the water rights. I'm not sure where this stands, if we should send something else to council, I thought we didn't wanna pay for rights that we weren't going to need, but...
So there were, there were communications from town council last week, and I think we have to dig through and check on that, and Linda Letty probably knows how that turned out. I think, as I understood it, we were not gonna need to retain water rights.
Okay.
But town council and Linda should be on top of that.
Yeah, we talked about that quite a while ago, but you're right, Linda should be.
Yeah.
Okay, then we have, and I don't believe that you need to sign anything, it doesn't look like, but two requests from Columbia Gas to repair leaks, and, well, one's to repair a leak, one's to approve an installation on County Road.
They're signed by the highway supervisor, correct?
They are.
Yes, but I think that they just, just so we acknowledge it.
Yep.
So that's set.
So they are not ahead, we have acknowledged that?
We did know, yeah.
This is to be signed, these are the licenses for Verizon to install the underground utilities, and I'm just seeing if there are two copies here. There are two separate ones that both need to be signed by the Board of Selectmen.
Is this for the police?
Yes, for the underground utilities there, so...
Do we need a motion?
I would make a motion and vote to sign the Verizon license agreement.
So moved. Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
This one, this is two. Just a letter updating us from the fire chief about his new hires, he has been appointing several new people to be on-call, part-time firefighter EMTs or part-time firefighter paramedics, and they're all going through the appropriate, like being Cory-checked and everything, and he's keeping us in the loop as well as the treasurer's office.
Great.
We have a request here from Chief Dillon to appoint James K. Cranshaw as a special police officer effective through June 30th, 2019.
Is this a relation?
I'm not sure.
So I make a motion we approve this appointment.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Then we have the state paperwork to nominate Griffin Webb to the state inspector of animals position. There are actually two separate appointments that, oh no, I'm sorry, that's the one appointment, I was thinking of a different one. So this would cover May 1st, 2019 through April 30th of 2020, and that's the state portion of his position.
And why is it those dates that are...
It's what the state uses, I'm sure that there's more of a, an explanation for it, but it's the...
But they're dictating it?
Yes.
Okay.
I would mention in passing that Griffin's been in touch with me on several animal inspector issues and just been doing a marvelous job, dedicated, on top of it, level-headed, moderate, and really good, so I make a motion that we sign... and really good. So I make a motion that we sign this appointment.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
We have a resignation letter from Amy Dion from her Board of Registrar position. And in relation to that, we have requests from a former town clerk. The first one is to appoint Elise Lyons as a Board of Registrar now through March 31st of 2019. And then the second one is to appoint Elise Lyons as a Board of Registrar, April 1st, 2019 through March 31st, 2022.
So I make a motion, we approve both of these appointments.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We have a letter here from Honor Chandler to the Board of Selectmen regarding the senior citizens' exercise fees. And she is requesting that the fees for the seniors to participate in exercise classes be reduced to that as some neighboring towns. She pointed out that Kingston is a lot less expensive, so I'm not sure if it's something that we-
I'd like to table that until we've had a chance to discuss that. And I think Christine should be here.
Okay. We'll keep this then in the correspondence folder so we can do it next.
Next meeting.
Next time.
Does she offer numbers?
Kingston, she mentioned something about Kingston being $3, but I'm not sure what class that is in particular.
Could you have, check it, just call them up? I mean, I have Joy Marble check it because I think that's where we're going with this.
Yes. I'll talk to Joy about this and make a copy of this for her.
Great.
We have a letter here from Mr. David Ziole of Thomas Blanchard Drive. He's asking about which street addresses are responsible for the maintenance of the retention pond. And he's asking if we have any documentation on file relative to the town's acceptance of that development. I can forward his request to the Planning Board and see if they have anything in their files when that subdivision was approved, but we had talked to them once before when we were responding to his initial letter, and to my knowledge, they didn't have much of anything. And that's kind of typical with some of the subdivisions that were done a while back in, in all towns, not just Plimpton. A lot of times, it was kind of a little bit of a gray area as far as who's responsible for the retention ponds on these properties.
I think this has got a history to it.
Long history.
Yeah, long history. So yes, I would say we go back to planning and-
Okay.
Planning, highway may have some history as well.
Right.
Although-
We got the highway history when we applied, replied to him initially, just that Jim Mulcahy had offered to pump it to kind of-
Yep.
So. And then we have the Plimpton Halifax Express. There was a very large article about kind of the goings-on of the Silver Lake School Committee meeting, including an interesting piece in there about a Silver Lake student who shared with that committee the features of an all-terrain wheelchair prototype that he designed. So that was really kind of neat.
I miss that. Great.
Yeah, really neat. And there were more tales of old Plimpton.
Someday will be the tales of old Plimpton.
You know, it's, we did a, a presentation or a group where we had the five people come in that grew up in the town and talk at the library.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Unfortunately, two have passed away now, so.
And then for my updates, we still have the ambulance billing and collection service, RFP, that's out for the Fire Department. Proposals are due back on April 3rd.
Are we getting any response?
There are people who have picked up the specs for it, but we have not received any responses yet. For the Green Communities application for this coming year, we did turn in that application, so we're applying for a little over $200,000 in grant funding for next year.
And is it specific to certain things?
It's specific to certain town buildings. Some of it is completing work from the audit that they did last year that we were, because you're capped at 250 as far as what you can apply for. We also had them go out and they audited the Highway Department, so it's incorporating some work there. We tried to have them audit the old townhouse, but the amount of space kind of in that attic area, they didn't think that they could reasonably get up there to do certain things without kind of disturbing the integrity of the building. So it just didn't seem like a good fit for, for those types of projects there, unfortunately, but-
We can do the lighting though, right? The bulbs, the LED bulbs?
We could try to do the LED bulbs there. I would have to go back through my notes, though, with them because they did look into that too. And I want to say that there was, it may have been that the payback on them would take too long or wasn't enough.
Yeah.
As far as applying for the different projects, something that the Department of Energy Resources looks at is what dollar amount will you expect to receive as far as a payback or return on the investment, and how many years does it take to realize it? So that tends to dictate some of the projects as far as what we, what we apply for or don't. And then otherwise, it's just been very busy with budgets and town meeting prep. I would mention for the board, just so you're kind of aware, it seems like we keep getting hit with different things as far as repairs to things at the different buildings. The Fire Department, for instance, the generator failure, because that happened during one of those storms that we had. Even though insurance is covering a bulk of that, there is about $2,000 of kind of residual costs and the deductible and whatnot. And aside from that, the entire electric panel there does need to be replaced. And that's estimated at about $4,300, and that needs to be done like ASAP. So the chief is collecting estimates for that. It sounds like the one that we're going to go with is the $4,250.
Yeah.
And we need to get that done before they can install the exhaust removal system because it's not adequate for them to wire anything to. And then also, Engine 2, he sent that out for repair, and one of the pumps on that engine had experienced kind of a catastrophic failure. So that's going to be roughly $3,800 to repair. So I'm only bringing this up just so that everybody kind of understands. And I was going to mention the same thing to FinCom, too. Sometimes when we come forward and we say, oh, we need a transfer request for building maintenance or whatever, I don't think people realize all the things that go wrong here, like on, no, I don't want to say a daily basis, but maybe a weekly basis, like the septic issue out back.
Yeah.
That's an invoice that we're going to have to pay, you know.
So in theory, though, within the budgets or some maintenance, I mean, because things are going to break every year.
Correct. And there is a small amount in all the budgets.
I, I wonder if in future years, maybe that number has to be a little bit more realistic since stuff breaks.
So we're trying to do that. One of the things that's being proposed in this year's budget cycle is we're taking the, I think the account used to be labeled Town House, but really it was for all the town buildings.
Yep.
And that was everything from, you know, repairs, maybe not major stuff, that would come out of the building maintenance article that was established, but basic stuff, like, oh, it was $800 for the Police Department to get a locksmith in. That happened a few months ago, and that was kind of unforeseen. So things like that. But not only was stuff like that being paid out of that account, but also like every time Steve needs to order paper towels, all of that. So what we tried to do with FinCom, we're separating those out. So we're going to have a town building account that's for those repair-type things, smaller scale, and then we're going to have a supplies account. So anything that's an expense that we can anticipate, like the trash collection-
Sure.
-water delivery, say for council on aging and stuff.
Yeah.
All of Steve's supplies, things like that will come out of one, and then the repairs out of another.
Makes perfect sense.
And it'll make you track it better, I think, hopefully.
Yeah, good. Wonderful. Thank you.
So that's it for me and my updates.
Great. Thank you. You want to run through the goals while, Liz, if you want to join, you know, your friends over there, feel free.
In Christine's absence, you want to skip the goals this week?
Okay. Minutes?
I did earlier.
So we have the, the executive committee meeting.
I did read those. I had no problem with those.
Okay, so I make a motion, they be accepted as, or should we wait for?
No, I think we can approve them.
Okay.
But what was the date? So it's in the, two weeks ago, right?
That would be, yeah, which would make it the 11th.
Yeah, the 4/11.
So I make a motion, the 3/11 open, or executive session minutes be approved as, as presented.
I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Great.
And we don't have the other minutes, I don't think.
No, you will.
Okay. So we'll put off the open session until later.
Can we make a motion?
Sure, why not?
Yeah.
Who else is going to make it? I was there.
Can I just mention that this is the sort of witching time of year when everything's going on and sort of all ends up back toward the town administrator's office, and she somehow still has a smile on her face. So thank you, thank you, thank you.
No problem.
Couple of just town updates. We are putting together a genealogy group at the library next Saturday. So anybody who's interested in joining to go take a look at their ancestry, come join us 10:30 Saturday morning on the 31st. I also went over to the cemetery on the Kingston Route 106 line, North Plymouth Cemetery. About three years ago, maybe five years ago, the scouts went in and cleaned that up, and I believe it was done under one of the Scouts Eagle, Eagle project. It would be nice if we could, I think we need to take a look at how to go in there because that's a cemetery that's got 70 people in it, and right now it's, it doesn't look very good. And I think we concentrate on Hillcrest and the Congregational Church, but we don't do the North Plymouth one.
I go by that one either two or four times a day, and I've probably made a note for the last 15 years of going to check it out, and I haven't. I think that's a great idea.
Yeah. I think I'll contact the scouts to see whether they would be interested, but if not, I think we sit down with the highway and talk through how we maintain it.
Yep.
It's a great idea. Okay. Well, we got a town cleanup, and then we have the plant sale on the Greenwood date, so that's great. Rants and raves?
So my, my rave is for Friends of Song, an a cappella vocal ensemble who played in town yesterday, songs of inspiration and hope. They were wonderful. They play next week in, I think in Marshfield at the North Country Church. Well worth experiencing. I think it's the perfect antidote for somewhat troubling and tumultuous political times.
They did a, they did a fabulous job. I, I wish we had publicized it better because even though it was, was over two-thirds full, it could have been packed.
A bunch of the people, there were probably 16 of them, several of them from Plimpton.
Right, right.
We're blessed to have that kind of town.
Yeah. I guess my rave is for, I keep raving about the bylaws, but all these boards are pulling this together in such a coordinated effort. I know it feels a little like it's houta skelta, but it isn't. These people have been working there. Fanny's off getting this all together so that we can come into town meeting and update. I think it's a tribute to the volunteer spirit in town. Hopefully, we can get more new people involved.
Please, please.
Yeah. I would make a motion that we close the selectmen's meeting.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Great.
Good night.
Night.